Stand your morning.
Yeah, I don't know what to do.
We'll call up, introduce the budget meeting to order. Okay, here's what we have asked for, correct? The general account, we asked for one hundred and nine thousand thirty dollars. Local road and streets, six thousand. Motor vehicle highway, fifteen thousand. Cumulative capital, imp. I M P. Improvement.
That's your cigarette tax.
Cigarette tax, fifteen hundred dollars. Et, ninety, twenty thousand dollars. Ninety-five hundred is the fund number. Twenty thousand dollars, totals, one hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Is all I need to read, Jen? All right. I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed budget. Motion's been made properly seconded to accept and introduce the proposed budget. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say say. Thank you. Motion carried. I'm making a motion we adjourn meeting.
Second.
Oh, I second.
You say, I second.
I second.
Motion's been made properly seconded to adjourn the
Budget.
Budget introduction meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say say. Thank you.
It was Bud Frick's brother.
How much? I thought you were gonna sign in.
There's two signs.
You don't have to sign the one that was the budget. It's over with.
Yeah, don't sign that one. This is already over.
How wide do you want? How, how wide do you want?
Need to be, the width, well, higher. We got like sixteen foot wide, street, or twenty foot section, sixteen foot wide.
Hey, Rick, hand me, hand me another property report, please. Is that on Radnor Street?
How wide, how wide does that street down there play their house? Do you want curb re曲?
Uh, I mean, you don't wanna have to curb re曲, but I mean, it can have.
Well, right, I was trying to figure out, they come in a standard size with.
We're gonna take a tape measure.
It's like sixteen foot to cover, wouldn't it?
Cover?
No.
Okay, right now, sixteen foot, okay.
It was four cent. They, they wouldn't be able to drive around it if you set it sixteen.
If you set it yet.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking Main Street there's probably closer to forty feet across.
I'm guessing.
Uh, get a tape measure, then I'll measure it. You're gonna take, can't you?
No.
I'm probably good.
Probably. We don't, we don't, we don't make, it ain't a math, we don't know.
About forty feet.
I've been saying it.
Sixteen foot wide. I don't know, I have to take, take, I'll measure.
I'm not sure.
I guess, but then I'd be completely wrong.
Say it'd be closer to thirty, I think.
When you take a recess, you'll measure it.
Well, yeah, but Main Street down here by the post office is wider than it is across the tracks. I, I.
I wonder about how much.
Doug was hearing, probably Dallas, was he? He's worked on it.
A Bob will be hearing that because he's in another state taking classes to be back. And David Chen tomorrow, he said.
Yeah, dude, seems like he's doing about thirty in there, dude. I hear him when I'm sitting inside and.
You talking about the same track?
Yeah, that old Duramax motor just.
Hey, he's far as up and down, he's not.
He drives, still drives pretty fast. I sit, my house is directly across. And I, I see him coming from both the north and the south.
He's not doing speed through there either. He's not doing on speed through there. I don't, I don't know if it's the same people that go through all the time, but those people speed through there all the time.
That's why, you get these, then it's gonna get everybody who speeds.
Yeah.
But he told you he wasn't speeding.
He said he was, his words were, he was a bus driver of so many years and that he don't speed.
You know his name?
I can't remember his name, but he's a.
I can tell you.
Frank Philly.
Frank Kelly.
You're kidding.
Do you have a blue truck there in Derry's old house?
Yes, it's Frank Kelly, it's Carmen Telson's stepson. Correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, anybody got any questions about last month's minutes? You guys got any questions? Who have a question?
A few of them actually, oh, Darren just here again, and I was gonna, was wanting to find out about the, what we're gonna do about the speeding on South Main. If we come up with anything on that, or have any information.
That's what I was talking about.
Well, either, I was thinking of, um, rumble strips. So, it makes, it makes a rumble, I don't.
That'll.
Speed bumps, I mean, you could, you could do that, man, but someone gets their car damaged, it's gonna be.
I thought you said speed humps when we originally talked about it.
They're, it's all a vernacular on how you wanna call it.
Well, the speed bump is higher.
The speed bump is one, you know, boom. Rumble strip makes that, you know, like when you're, like when you're approaching a.
I don't think that, slow them down.
You have to do something that when you have snow in the, and you're trying to plow the road, that you don't tear up your six thousand dollar plow that we've got.
Well, rumble strip, you wouldn't, that would just, I'm not even sure how they even adhere, uh, adhere to the asphalt.
So, does anybody see that?
The highway department people who put those things in the road, those, you know, when you hit them, it goes. Can we just?
Those are rumble strips.
Yeah.
Now, that's actually a machine that gets hot and forces changes your asphalt.
So we buy one of those used somewhere, do it itself?
I think probably red, I guess.
Well, I mean, that would just make the whole street that way, that people can complain about the street being rough. It's slowing down.
But I mean.
We could quit paving and that way, yeah, potholes.
Go back to that third world country stuff.
I try it.
Ground roads.
Now, are you seeing more than one vehicle speeding?
Yeah, several, several, just speed up and down.
And have you reported these people to Rick? Does Rick know their names and their vehicles?
I don't.
No.
Can't stop them.
It's not the same people, though, it's not gonna be the same people, it's a constant problem that ever changing.
Yeah, there's people coming through, don't it?
Yeah, so, the only, the only solution, well, there's two solutions, you can do the, the.
Rumble.
Or the, the single bump, put signs up and point towards, so they, so they know it's a speed bump. And, or you can put, like, put a, put a stop sign there at the track.
Or worst case, we might even be able to get some cops on duty every now and then to put it over. Might help.
What happened?
Twenty-five years, it don't stop speed, I can tell you that firsthand.
What happened and what was the result of the humps we put on the alley between the?
It worked until the, to the, to the.
The.
Snowplow.
Tore it up.
So, right.
And that was the one that was between the barber shop and the apartment building?
Right.
Or not the apartment, the?
But it, it, it definitely, it solved the problem, 'cause you didn't have, you didn't have to speed no more through there.
But now it's not there, and if you had to speed, then we had it since they came up, 'cause it's not.
I'm sure people speed through it, I'm sure, yeah, people, there's no one's complaining about it.
How expensive is that?
Excuse me?
Couple hundred bucks for the ones that you stake down.
And that's.
You don't talk about like the plastic ones?
Yeah.
And you can stake it down with, I don't know, what we call it?
Rebar?
Yeah, rebar. And, if you, if you tear them up when you plow, you put a new one down, springtime comes.
And we don't know for sure how much those cost.
Or.
They're a couple hundred bucks for like a, like a six or eight foot section.
Would one be enough in that long stretch, probably?
Not, no, you would need two of them.
Say two eight foots and.
Two eight foots, you get staggered.
No, I mean, and one place be enough, or do we need two different places?
I'd say, like, almost right in front of my house, 'cause it's right middle.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking.
And you live in Varner's house?
Yeah, it's probably about mid there.
So, you would need those two, plus you would need a sign saying speed bump.
Oh, you have to do that?
Oh, yeah.
Liability.
Do you run out?
Yeah.
Where to print to? She printed the printer in there.
I clicked the Rico one, is that the right one?
Yeah, that's Rico.
I got the sign too.
Yeah, we've got that, so, we can give you a cost on it, so you guys can make a decision on.
And how hard are they to take back up?
For winter?
For winter time?
They're, they're driven in by, by a rod.
Well, it would.
No.
It wouldn't tear them up?
They're meant to come up, that's why they're not.
I think we'd be better off talking to somebody that's used them before and put them down, that would know how.
Well, we did, we put them in the alley.
He didn't do it.
I didn't do it, Doug did. That's my whole point.
Who did, Doug?
The street people, Doug.
Doug, okay.
I'm just saying, but if you get them, I'm sure we can figure out how to put them in real quick, if not, you can, I mean, you're gonna wait till the end, it's gonna be October, November, I mean, how long you guys are gonna wait for it, I just, if you want it, if you want it done sooner, we can order stuff and, I mean, sure.
Well, I got a sure solution, if you know who it is and you know when they're coming, get ya. Whole bunch of nails, I throw them at the street.
I got some boards that move all the way across.
Nah, Kathy's is joking, she didn't, yes, oh, that's the Greens Fork stopstick?
Yeah, that's the Greens Fork stopstick, there you go. And no worries about me being injured.
But, um, and there's something else that we could do, that we can get another radar sign, like we got on both sides of town.
That's something I was thinking too, how much are those though?
Five thousand dollars.
Huh?
Won't they five thousand dollars?
Fifty-five hundred for both of them.
Yeah.
So they're.
Yeah, everybody knows where it's, that's fixed.
Twenty-five hundred, but, you know, they're solar powered and they're kind of maintenance free.
We don't have five thousand.
Do you have that kind of money in your budget?
No.
Kinda don't in ours.
Please do it this year.
Maybe that's something we just allocate certain amount of money to until we got the money to actually do it. Meet.
Uh, yeah, 'cause other things.
You're hard to learn, you'll learn.
You'll learn, yeah.
Everything's emergency, yeah.
Well, here it is, September.
Yeah.
So the put speed pump, pump, whatever you wanna call it in.
I think that's the best.
You're looking at October, November.
You're looking at probably a thousand dollars.
Uh, I'll find out in a second.
No, he said two hundred apiece.
Two hundred apiece, but you got, you got to sign, the sign posted, probably another, another three or four dollars. So, it's gonna be quite close to a thousand dollars for all that.
The thing is, if we're getting it that late, then we don't wanna probably put it in till spring. 'Cause you're just gonna have to pull it right back up.
I agree.
I can go ahead and get it.
Unless the guys lift the plow up where the signs say you've got speed bump.
I wouldn't count on that.
Because typically, they'll pull them up, but, but that, but again, I know that if a plow hits it, it's coming up.
Don't salt that street in the winter.
Um, and we better hope it comes up, 'cause if it don't, let me repeat again, it will tear up our six thousand five hundred dollar plow.
That's what I'm saying, we wait till spring before we actually put it in, but we go ahead and order it, or whatever, that way we got it, and then as soon as we know the snow's done.
Well, that would clean, if you got. Yeah, that's a, you guys, yeah.
I don't know whether we have.
I just worry about putting it down.
Do we have the money to do that right now, Brenda?
Five thousand dollars?
No.
About a thousand.
And, and then, and not do anything with it till spring, or we better off wait till spring.
Till spring, I just, I think it's too late to get it now.
Well, with that kind of money, we're not gonna do anything.
We, we had this problem, we had this problem in cars, didn't we, we fixed the problem for fifty bucks.
With what?
How's that?
We bought a cold patch, formed a speed bump, and then painted it yellow, and we never had the problem again.
Why didn't we do that?
Fifty bucks. I mentioned it several times, but it never goes nowhere.
Well, I think that's great.
Cold patch, I don't like the cold patch idea either, it'll take cold patch a hold, number one, cold patch is more expensive than hot pavement, a lot more expensive.
No, you go.
It's a thousand dollars a ton, Rick.
You go to Walmart, you go, you go to Home Depot and you get two bags of, two bags of it, they sell it right now.
You get two fifty pound bags, right?
Or, probably more than that, probably about four of them. I'm just saying, I'm giving you guys alternatives, and that, that, that speed hump is still there, and it was done there about twelve years ago.
Now, snowplow.
Ride right over it.
The snowplow?
Rides right over.
Rides right over, but just have to lift his plow, I'm sure.
No, he just plow, he plows it, it's, it's not a, it's not a, like a, like this, it's more like this, it's just a gradual ride.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Yeah, so that way, plow just goes right over top of it, you don't have that problem.
And why don't we do that for a hundred bucks?
Get with Doug and see, and, and Doug would have the form.
Checking into.
No, yeah, it's always more permanent.
Never hurts to check into anything.
Yeah.
You gonna check into it?
Doug might say, no, that's not gonna, that's not gonna stick.
I've never met him yet.
Oh, you will.
I need to meet him first. I would do that.
Talk to him about it.
'Cause I think that'd be a good, good thing to check on.
Oh, we're talking about, you haven't met Doug?
No, no.
Okay.
I haven't met hardly anybody yet. Only just got back in the state like the other day.
What else you got, Scott? We should get a couple things.
Um, I was wondering if you guys done any more thinking on the cameras, I know she talked to me about it the other night, when I stopped doing thoughts and paperwork.
Cameras for what?
The ones Rick talked about a few months ago, we were gonna get some cameras and sell them in different locations at different times, correct?
We need some out here too.
Same thing that we brought.
Mine is for, for issue, are you talking about security for the building?
I, I see. I guess, I'm not sure.
'Cause there's, there's two different cameras, you need one camera where you gotta start, you have to start recording your own meetings.
Oh, that's July two thousand forty-five.
Recording our own meetings, right there.
Yeah, but we have.
This is talking about outside cameras.
Right, that, that was for, that was for issues that were going on, where people were having issues with individuals.
Yeah.
And, uh, it looks like that is kind of being resolved through the courts now.
Okay, but we need a camera back here.
Well, you need, you need, you need a couple cameras, here they point, point towards the, but yeah, I was a.
We need one for this front door.
You want a ring camera?
Huh? No, we need a camera that's heavy.
I'll take care of the cameras when you're ready.
Right here?
Yeah.
Ring is.
What, what for? I don't understand, they break in?
No, I tell you that.
Oh, people come, being able to see people walking out?
See people who don't want it, put them in.
Oh, well, that would tell you too.
Yes. You're sick and tired of it.
You come down and the door's unlocked. Really?
And don't get me started. We're responsible for the stuff in here, and we cannot be responsible for it if somebody leaves it unlocked.
I thought you said don't get started.
Yeah.
Don't start, we're not getting you started, don't start yourself.
I mean, we could, Scott, we can go to Best Buy, if you wanna pick up some cameras.
Well, I don't know if I necessarily wanna go with ring necessarily.
No, no, not ring, I'm talking about just a, just a camera there, if you want.
But you can get some that run off, like S D cards that are event recorder and stuff, whatever, there's like all different kinds of options.
Motion detectors?
Yeah, they got motion, I've got three at my house, and they don't come with a monthly bill, you just buy the cameras and stuff, and then put an app on a phone or something, and you get it, and you run it.
We have.
That's what you've been talking about, we've been talking about that for months.
We have Blink cameras.
Same thing he said.
How?
We have Blink cameras.
We have Blink, uh, Blink does that.
Hundred bucks a year, Doug's here for whoever wants it.
Yeah, I don't have to pay a hundred bucks a year at all.
Well, I like them, I know how to use them.
Yeah.
But, we would, we would definitely want, like, the cloud, camera with the cloud service, so that way.
You get cloud on just about all of them.
And stored, and we can access it.
So you're wanting like, uh.
Like maintenance free, we don't got full of it, we can, it can go to all, all the board members' phones when there's activity, or if you want to see what's going on around, around the building or whatever, you guys can go in there, or the front door, or the garage. Yeah.
Yeah, I like the Bling, we've had them for over a year.
Last ones that, I was looking at, at Best Buy was Blink, 'cause you can get like a four camera pack.
Four?
Yeah, I'm just.
They're not that expensive.
No.
No, how much are they?
We got.
It was.
Three hundred bucks.
Yeah, for a four package.
Okay.
Um, especially if you get them on sale.
Oh, do they have zoom or not?
Zoom.
To zoom in on?
Zoom in.
I would.
You can zoom in on.
I would think so, I'll have, my ring camera.
I know some cameras do, some cameras don't.
I'll show you mine when, when you guys get done, I'll show you mine.
And yours is on your phone, or does it come to your computer also?
On my phone.
So that would be the question, whose phone would it go to?
You can go to everything.
You can, yeah, most of them, you can add, like, our cameras go to my phone, and then you, I'd share it till it go to my wife's phone. Right.
Yeah, we've got it going to, you log in, you just have to use the app to log into it.
You can have it go like to the board, the board members, and they, they can go on their app, and anytime they could pull up the camera, they, they.
And probably put some outside, now, I would still probably wanna put at least one or two inside though, for when, and you can activate it, like, whenever you're done and leaving, nobody's here. Or something, kind of protect, 'cause like, you see, there's some papers, you fall, you know, something there to, you kind of watch that.
Well, you suggested.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
I think that was a toss.
Dead ball, or at least one of those code, code locks.
Door in here, that's what he suggested.
I thought this door was the one that was left unlocked.
It was. It was.
Oh, you want, what, you wanted to get a, well, yeah.
I just want a camera on that door there.
That's easy, nothing, just mount it right there.
Mount it right there and face that way.
Well, and those, the indoor blink cameras are cheap.
Yeah, yeah, the ones on the inside are real cheap.
Wi-Fi, and off you go.
That's the thing too, is there Wi-Fi here?
Yes.
Almost all of them require Wi-Fi.
Yeah, we got, we got good Wi-Fi here.
'Cause I gotta move one of my cameras, my Wi-Fi's not strong where it's at, because metal building.
Well, that's the problem, you'd have it outside, if you mounted stuff outside, 'cause this is either metal building, the Wi-Fi would be limited, but I think it does reach out to the parking lot.
Well, just put some throttle in.
Usually you can test it though, before you hang it.
Okay, what else you got, Scott?
Uh, any more information on the dogs? I know after the meeting, I had like four more instances with that same dog.
Her being, the dog being.
But the last time I went down through there, it was on a cable.
They're both tied up now.
Okay.
And have been for better than, I'd say ten days, both of them, male and female.
Like I said, I've been out of town, so I wasn't sure.
She must have went and got a new cable or something, because the knot that she had in the other cable, there's no way that she'd be able to use it. Isn't that how they used to do it in the old days? There's type people that want cable, they run, that's what you do if you're a kid.
No, they tied them.
The parents do the kids.
The clothesline, that's where they get brought.
Yeah, that's good, 'cause that dog kinda scary when it comes out, it's a big dog.
You want the female?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a big dog.
No, it is a big dog.
What do you call that dog?
Well, I don't think it's what you think it is, I don't think it's. I don't think they're parinies. The people out here with the llamas on thirty-eight, or alpacas, I don't know which they are, those are parinies, and they're squatty big dogs. These dogs tend to be somewhat slender in places.
Should be the food they're feeding them too.
Yeah.
And when they get bad.
It's a big dog.
Is, they're not getting.
All I know is it was coming like almost all the way across the street, while we're going by with our dogs, trying to walk them.
Yes, I've seen it.
And I got the baby, and that's what made me mad, is if I just got the dog, that's one thing, but if I got the baby in the stroller, that's what was upsetting me.
I don't think that dog is aggressive, but he charges people.
Yeah, and then gets my dogs locked up.
Yes, it is frightening.
Because they don't like a dog, they don't mind dogs coming out, you know, up to them, it, but if they come across like that, then they, they don't like that.
Um, they are tied up right now.
If, uh, if you guys see the dog, 'cause, uh, both you guys have my number, send me a text when it happens, that way I'll deal with it right there on the, on the, on the, on the spot in a timely manner. That way you guys aren't waiting three or four days, or five days, or whatever.
Well, something must have triggered her to tie that other one up.
Yeah.
Did you go down and talk to them?
No, I, I haven't been, I've yelled a few times when it happened.
Oh, blame you.
But, I'm mostly trying to get the dog to go back, because it did seem to be somewhat receptive if I took a.
I talked to her probably two days after that, after the board meeting, 'cause she was at, she works there at the.
Road one, McDonald's.
McDonald's, and I, I see her there, I, I told her, I go, you gotta do something with them, you know, with the dog, and she said that she was gonna be getting a cable, because she showed me a picture, and I'm, I'm, I remember seeing it there by the tree, that the cable's all knotted up, it's like a, I don't know.
Oh, in a big ball.
Yeah, yeah.
And they can only run four or five feet.
Yeah, I said, you can't, you can't use this cable like this, and so she said that she was gonna be getting a new cable for them dogs, I said, you're gonna have to, 'cause if not, you're gonna be getting dick of it for it.
I looked up to see if they were very expensive, and up to a hundred twenty-five pound dog for thirty feet was only nineteen ninety-nine on Amazon.
Oh, for the cable?
Well, she really needs to change, this cable's, after a while, it'll start twisting and breaking it and.
But at nineteen ninety-nine, that's not the cost that much.
Yeah, but over, over a few years' time, they.
And I wonder what's gonna happen with those dogs this winter and how they're gonna stay warm.
Them dogs stay warm.
Yeah, them dogs love winter.
So, Mr. Williams did get with, um, Bob Bullock on the cross street, where he installed the solar system, and it was okay, and he did get the main.
Unless there's not any back feed issues?
Yeah, he said it was okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not hooked up to the power, like, to the one ten line that I, it's totally separate.
Well, I'm glad you did.
I would.
You turned off the solar system now?
Yeah.
Before we go any further, I, he brought up a good thing, I need to introduce Scott, he is our new town board member, he is taking Rick Stewart's place, Scott Cushion. He lives down on South Main, you got any problems, just go knock on his door.
Right, dog problems, speeders, road problems, we'll, we'll put his phone in route there and ask.
Are you still in the courthouse?
Yes.
Security?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were the sheriff's, sheriff's private security guard, private security detail.
Well, no, I, I don't have to do any of that stuff anymore, they, I don't do the high-risk transports anymore. Last time I did one of those is when I come back sick with COVID. The reason I did it was 'cause it was, huh?
You got any else I would like?
Uh, let's see, there was, I don't know a whole lot about this, but something about one seventeen North Main, um, anything been found out about that on the complaints about the yard, infill threshing weeds?
Oh, that's what I was talking about a while ago, that's Opal's old house.
That's the house down at the end, at the end of Main Street, the one that, uh, uh, we've had people in the past try to get us to condemn it, but what you gotta understand, you can't just knock on somebody's door and say, move out, we're condemning the house.
She don't live there no more?
Excuse me?
She don't live there no more?
She don't have to, anybody lives there, can live there. They don't, and, and.
And none of those ordinances have changed over the years, as far as.
I asked our building commissioner here last month and the month before that about adults in a house, they don't have to have running water, they don't have to have power, they don't have to have nothing, if there are adults and no children in there, it's okay.
And are you actually seeing them outside?
Yeah.
Using the, yeah, we did.
Using the bathroom?
Uh-huh.
I'd call, if I saw that, I think I'd call nine one one, say we, we got some people that are. You know?
Well, there's nobody there now, they're gone.
Oh, they're hard on?
Yeah.
They gotta get to the second group of people, yeah.
I just find it hard to believe that in two thousand twenty-three, almost two thousand twenty-four, that even in a small town, they can't have some kind of ordinances about, you got a well, but you got a house that the rodent, the Duke Energy Man said himself, he refused to hook up the electricity, because he said there was too much rodent damage in the wiring, it would be a fire hazard.
Okay, that's his call too, yeah, so that's all right.
And so he, they would not hook up the electricity for that people, so they had no water, no way to flush, no way to wash, nothing.
Well, and winter's coming, maybe nobody will be up there.
Is there anybody residing there now?
No.
No, it's empty.
Where did Opal go?
She is a panoramic, I think, in Centerville.
Right, Centerville, that's where, that's probably the good folks go.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep, she lives, the Barker, both Barker fellers live in the panoramic also.
Does anybody actually own it, or?
Yep.
Yes, Opal's place, the place, yes, they do.
And they're currently on their taxes.
I just talked to him.
They just bought it, they haven't even come due yet, they haven't had, they need to have to pay taxes.
For a ten inch.
Chris Ball, originally.
In two inches.
Yeah.
Not a, a public health hazard?
Are you psycho-rum rascal?
Like I say, I keep bouncing it off our building commissioner, that's his, he's the one that's supposed to be able to answer all those questions for us, you know, what codes to go to, I've asked him multiple times. Every time he has said, he even said it last month, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I remember that.
As long as no children are involved.
But like.
I know what Mary Ann said, if you don't have water, then you're gonna poop in the yard, you're gonna pee in the yard.
You're gonna.
You're gonna poop in a bucket, you're gonna take it to the creek, I've seen that happen here too this time, before we had.
And they said it was a fire hazard because the wiring had been chewed up by rodents.
Well, my thing is, I would like, I wish that Duke Energy would report that to the fire department then, you know, it's not asking.
All I know is the guy was over there to hook it up, and he come out and she was crying, the woman, I don't even know, can't remember what her name was. Because they could not hook up the electricity because the guy said, too much rodent damage, too much wiring damage, it would be a fire hazard.
We, uh, we'll have to check with Doug and see if it's been reported, I mean, my thing is, if things get reported like that to the fire department, then the fire department probably got measures that they can take to get this place condemned. But as far as us as a town board, we can do anything about that. We're not, it's not our expertise, you see what I mean? But if Duke Energy tells the fire department it's a fire hazard, then the fire department says, okay, we've got a fire hazard, they've gotta fix it or it's gotta be condemned, then they would do that with the people in charge of building.
Well, it would seem to me that there would be someone that would go and say, okay, we'll just go inspect, and we'd go, somebody from the county. That would go in and say, okay, there is all this damage, there is all this wiring damage, there is this, there is plumbing issues, there's all that.
Why would a building inspector could do that?
They could, but who, who does Duke, who did, uh, Duke Energy report it to? You, or can you do it? You know?
I can't tell Duke Energy to report it to anybody, I wasn't the one that called them and asked them to turn it on.
Right, you know the guy's name at Duke that came out to turn it on?
No.
Well, we could check, we could, oh, Duke can ask them if, if one of their guys would refuse to turn on the power for one reason, and that would start the baller on them, I would think.
We need to get Bob involved, yeah.
Well, we need to get Bob involved, or Bob replaced or something, I don't know why.
If Bob has not resigned at this point with two greens for.
No.
No, he's still with us, he's at classes right now, cool. Air handler's got taken care of?
Do what?
Air handler's got taken care of?
Yep. Yes. What the air handlers end up costing out there Brendan?
I was just.
That PDC, uh.
Not one of them, yeah.
That PDC pump? On us?
Think so.
I'm not sure that we've got bill for that motor yet, we got bill for the pump.
Okay, a twenty, like a twenty-six hundred dollar PDC bill.
That's for a pump probably.
That was a pump that went to the lift station there.
Maybe it hasn't come in.
G B price, one air handle cost twenty thousand dollars back years ago.
We're gonna be standing with the Christmas lights on the Duke Energy poles.
Haven't heard nothing back from them.
We've called them though.
Yeah.
Multiple times.
I think I've called them probably five times.
Are they just?
My thing is.
Skipping over us?
Evidently, but I know the last year or two, they haven't hung, haven't been hung up anyway.
No, probably.
They did last year, because they weren't very good, were they?
They need to be reworked, and now that there is a new, uh, a new group down there at the community center, maybe they'll look at that this year, I don't know. I know they've got a, a whole new.
I swear it's not COVID, I just let the doctor guess.
Whole new group, right? Community center? Anybody here go to community center meetings?
Not anymore. Used to be on the board, knocking out.
Lori is president, I'm gonna say that.
Wow, she's on the board, I'm not sure what.
I don't know who's president now, but no surgeons remember.
We can ask her what, what plans they have, that can come to town this year.
Does the town even have enough Christmas lights to hang?
The town, the town will have any township.
Oh, I mean, township.
Yeah, those are, those are, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, they're very, very expensive. It sure is.
You wouldn't say that it'd cost you that much.
Anything else? Kathy, you have anything?
No, I've got it.
All right, I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from last month's meeting.
I second it.
Motion's been made, proper accepted, all in favor say aye. All opposed, say a stay. Hi, Mary Ann.
I don't know if she's gonna come back and have more to say or what, no.
Who?
Mary Ann, because next month's appearance of services, but that's, he's here.
I need you to, you can sign, because you don't hear the meeting, but you can sign.
So, yes, you can.
What you got, Gerger, got anything?
No, I was just gonna ask about the speedboat.
Cool. Halt, he hopped. Mr. Bush?
Uh, served six no contact orders, usually that, that's the sheriff's department.
What's that mean?
Uh, Dylan Kelsey Hall and all of his actions over the last year.
And no contact?
Mean that Kelsey cannot make contact with any, any of the individuals that are witnesses against him.
Oh, okay.
In the felony arrest that occurred last month.
Is that what you served six no, uh?
Yeah, five, five people and then plus Kelsey. Uh, so, basically if he violates that, he, he'll be arrested for, uh.
Trust passing?
Violating the restraining order.
So there's five people, he didn't have any contact?
Right.
Well, that typically works both ways too, they can't be in contact with him.
Right, and they were told that, so, they, they were told that, don't be, don't be calling him, don't be going seeing him. I still hear bits and whistles that he, you know, he drives by and looks at people, you know, I go, well, we'll let him take it to the edge and then we'll see what happens. But the judge is, the judge, I was kinda surprised, he was quite, cause I had to go serve him in court, he, he shut, cause. Sheriff's Department kept stopping by his house and he wouldn't answer the door obviously, so, me and, me and Ron went up there to, to the court gate and served him in court.
So he was called to court and he had to serve him in court?
Right, just playing a game, he likes to play that, play that game, so we just, uh, had a, uh, radio encryption meeting with the sheriff and, uh, RPD and the county fire.
Still scheduled for two thousand twenty-three?
I, I don't see it happening by the end of the year, all the small towns are ready, but now, now it seems like Richmond and the sheriff's department are kinda.
So it'll be Wayne County and Richmond both?
Yes.
Now, will you be able to hear fire on the scanners?
Fires are not changing, they're gonna, they're gonna stay on the regular, uh, unencrypted frequency, but. Basically, people will have to interpolate, you know, uh, what's going on by, listen to the fire traffic, because they won't be able to hear the police. But, and there's people already raising hell about that, the newspaper, the, the news agencies, they're all raising, they're all raising cane about it, but.
So they, they won't be in the know real quick.
Well, I think that they're gonna be fed like a delayed feed.
Yeah.
To, to the press, it'll be, I don't know how long the delay is gonna be, but it's gonna be delayed, so they won't hear it live. Uh, had a parking complaint on one thirteen North Green, had, had a parking issue and. Brandy Jeffers and another individuals having issues. It was insane.
It's insane, you can't tell somebody they can't park on the street.
Well, that wasn't what it was all about.
Well, that was part of it, but it was just other, just not being a very good neighbor and it was really uncalled for.
I remember when my mom moved in up there, it started to be evil.
Yeah, it's, uh, then South Maple Street had, had a complaint, uh, reference, sorry, RV parking. It got attached about the RV being parked on Maple Street, it was, uh, it was towed there. And then by the time I got there that morning, it was already moved into the yard, so, we'll see what, we'll.
Can it legally be in the yard, not run?
No.
Okay.
If it's like, like any other junk vehicle, it's.
It didn't have any plates on it, did it?
I don't care about plates.
Oh, okay.
If it's operational, I, I, it's their property, their yard, I try not to interfere, but when it's starting to look like Sanford and Sons, then it's. And then, you know, uh, I did talk with Brandy Jeffers about getting, she, her getting that fence up, I go, on her, 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 um, Aces back there. And, uh, she is making, making progress on that, so. I just talked to her last week about. Yeah, she put a fence all the way across that back, so you won't be, of course you're gonna see the, you see the RV over the fence, but I said, we're not gonna be that. Picky, we just want to make it look, look nice, we got baseball games over there during the summertime.
Does she have a, a deadline to put a fence up, or do you say, if you tell me you're working on it, I'll leave you?
Well, she just, she just got surveyed to start digging the hose, so.
I was gonna say, I'm hoping she's working with the township trustee on that, because then the rest of that property is all township trustee.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you get a fence up, that, that's a figure and trustee.
Yeah.
Uh, did pick up the computer that was donated from the Indiana Supreme Court Office of Administration, got that and a printer and scanner, so. They're upgrading the e-ticket, I think October is gonna be upgraded where you had to have a new computer anyway, so, it worked out between the one that Ron donated. And then the one that we got from the, from the courts. And then the radio that was donated by state surplus, uh, went over there and me and Gary actually got it installed. So, uh, it's installed and, like I said, that's a forty-five hundred dollar radio we got for nothing.
For real?
Once it installed then?
Huh? The charger.
And we're using two cars?
Yes, the white one, and, oh, it's just, just kind of a white one, for, for actual patrolling, because it's got the computer and stuff still in it.
We don't have any intention on using the other at all?
Yeah, we're gonna use it, we're, we're gonna put a computer. We just got the bracket and stuff for it, so we're gonna be, now, and you guys have to figure out, or what's your guys' thought on the other car? Cause we got two cars donated, so what, what are you guys' thought?
No more money in Greensport, has, we don't afford it.
No, I, I know we're gonna get rid of one, but what, what do you guys, what do you guys want to do?
You're talking about this one right here.
You can keep the, you can keep the white one as far as long as certain, between the white one and the other, what's, what's that, challenger, what is that?
Avenger.
Avenger, avenger.
The two donated ones, one of them you're keeping, the other you wanna get rid of?
Well, that's up to you guys.
But that's what you are thinking?
Right, uh, I think Buddy had talked about one time, just hell, give it to the dang town employees, they're driving the truck. I don't, I mean, I, I don't care, I don't, I don't, whether I have the Avenger or I have the white car, I, to be honest with you, I, I could really care less because they're both about the same year. And they both got the same, I mean, the Avenger's in nicer condition than the white car.
And the Avenger's a newer one or?
It's oh nine.
The other one's a seventeen though, correct?
Yeah.
Did you get the interior fixed in that one?
Yes, I got it fixed.
That's a common thing with those, I've learned.
Yes, yes, I, I heard, yeah, the, you know, remember the door was warped? Yeah, cause something, he didn't have the windows tinted, whatever he parked it, it got hot and just separated.
And that's why we had to have the windows tinted, right?
Dang right, you damn right.
What are your ideas on this?
I mean, I would like to use the Avenger, but I think.
For what?
Get rid, get rid of the white, get rid of the white car and keep.
The one you're patrolling with now, get rid of.
But, I think the town would get better, better use out of it by taking the Avenger and having the street department, so they're not putting miles on that truck.
Okay, the white one is a?
Eleven.
And it is a what?
Crown Vic.
Crown Vic, and you're thinking you wanna get rid of it?
That was my, um, original thought, but it just, it, it makes more sense for the town, just keep the white one, so we don't, we don't put any more money into the police department, take that Avenger. You guys, for as long as soon, you can take that car and put it on the selling block and sell the thing out. The letter that we got from the state says you guys can do what you want with it.
Right.
What is the newest of the four vehicles we're dealing with?
The two thousand seventeen Charger.
And is it ready to go?
Yeah, I got lights in it, I got sirens in it, I got the radios put in now.
So we have two that are completely police ready.
Yeah, and then you got the Avenger. So, I mean, that was my first thought, when, when we started this process and the state gave us those vehicles, is yeah, get rid of the white one, because the body's starting to, it's starting to.
Well, what will you use for backup if you get rid of it?
Well, I would, I would keep the Avenger by now, but what I'm saying, but, but I'm thinking though, that the town could probably use another vehicle, the town boys, instead of driving that truck all the time. They have a car that could. Huh?
We need to size down, this town is too small, two hundred and fifty-five people.
Downsized what? That's what we're talking about?
We need to downsize, why, why do we need two police cars?
Cause it's got two patrols.
Well, because you got.
You get a deer in one and then you don't have a police department.
You gotta have a backup.
Right, have, have a backup.
Like you said, we don't need three.
No.
We have four.
No, we got three, the ground's already gone.
Oh, it's gone.
Yeah, fire department got it. So, I mean, uh, what's your guys' thought on it? I mean, I can go either way.
Okay.
Does the town?
You'll go either way, the way we got to go is exactly that.
Hit me with the years, hit me with the years on the three vehicles we have.
Eleven seventeen, two elevens, I think.
No, oh nine is the Avenger, but it's only got like, uh, I don't know.
I know it's low miles.
Eighty-nine thousand miles or something, I don't know.
And the seventeen is a?
Charger, it's got a lot of miles.
Hundred sixty-nine thousand miles on it. Well, you're right, if you had a deer one time, then you're, then you don't have a vehicle until it gets fixed.
And the, the eleven?
It's a.
Is the white one?
Crown Vic.
And it is a?
Crown Vic.
How many miles?
Uh, a hundred and. Oh, I'm sorry, ninety, ninety, roughly ninety-eight thousand.
Well, I want your opinion on this, Rick. What, what do you feel?
If it was up to me, I'd take all the equipment out of the white car, put it into Avenger, and then you got, we got two cars there, which is, which is how we planned it, but. If you guys need a vehicle so that they're not, how many miles are, are on that truck, that truck already?
Oh, it's probably ungodly.
Is it ten thousand?
Yeah, but you gotta think about insurance.
I think it's a little bit lower.
Insurance gonna be, insurance gonna be the same.
You would go down two years to the Avenger versus the Crown Vic?
Yeah, go look at the Crown Vic and then go look at the Avenger and you'll see, it's, that Avenger's like a new car.
Not only the years, it, it's just condition probably.
Yeah, condition.
How many miles does the Avenger have on it? Just guess.
Eighty, eighty-five or ninety.
Probably a little less or the same as the white one maybe.
And it was a prosecutor's car, not a police officer's car, so it was.
Oh, it was investigator.
Yeah.
Was it, was it Rand Harden put up with?
No, that would've just been.
Well, I definitely agree that we need to get rid of one of these vehicles, which one, I can't make that decision. They're the ones that are using it, I think that, that's why I want your input.
Well, I guess my question is, is that, if the street department could make use of the car, would it benefit the town more? I mean, that, that's why, if it not, then I'll take, I'll, we'll get, we'll. I mean, that, that's why, if it not, then I'll take, we'll get, we'll, we'll demo out the, the white car, put everything over in, in the Avenger and then move, then move, move with our plan, but if you guys think it would be beneficial to the town, for the street guys, then hand.
What's that Crown Vic worth?
I'm looking right now.
Okay, so my question is, you said that seventeen's got a hundred and sixty-nine thousand miles on it?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe that's the one we need to get rid of?
I would get rid of that one.
Why?
Oh, that's all-wheel drive, five-point-seven all-wheel drive.
What's it gonna cost us to fix it the first time it breaks big with a hundred and sixty-nine thousand mile on it?
I don't know, that's not the car I want to get rid of, that's the car I want to keep. That's a police car, police, police package, it's meant for policing.
It's probably got the.
This one here is, you just said what this white one is too, right?
Look at the condition of it though, is what I'm trying to tell you. If you guys ask me for my opinion, I told you what my opinion is.
I wanted.
If you guys wanna, if you guys wanna get.
No, 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 don't get all bent out of shape if you, if we tell you our opinion too, because our opinion is the one that really counts.
Well, you know what, you always tell me that, we're gonna make your, make your decision then, that's fine.
I don't have an opinion on it, that's why I went to you. You guys drive the vehicles, we do not. You know far more about the capabilities of those automobiles than any of us in here.
That's my whole point, can the Avenger do the street department any good?
We would have to ask the local street department that, right?
But I don't think, well, I don't think the street department would know.
But if, if you're based on condition, the white car is the one that needs to go, if you want to know what the condition. Go out, you just walk out there and look at, look at the structure of the car, open up the hood and look how, how rusted the engine compartment is. That's what I'm saying.
That's why I asked your opinion, that's why I went to you.
Could you keep the Avenger, get rid of the Challenger, get rid of the white car and buy a Challenger with plus miles like that that you would want?
I don't know if you could afford to buy one. Only you buy, only you can afford to drive it.
Then you'd only have one.
No, 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 I said keep one, keep one, get rid of the one with a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, get rid of the other one and buy another Challenger.
I don't think you'd get enough money to be able to purchase one really.
Unless you got it at auction, wherever the sheriff department phases one.
When you got a.
Runs out, but then you've got to get it all set up because they strip them.
Or take that, take that Avenger and sell it and put that cash in a, in an account and use it for the, for maintenance of the police cars, the two other ones, there you go.
That's, that's a thought.
That's a good thought.
That's an option, yeah.
But like I said, you know.
My thing is about the Charger, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand miles. Any more mileage ain't what it used to be, but if it's got a hundred and sixty-nine thousand road miles on it, how many idle miles?
Oh, no, it was a.
No, that's hard to, but.
Well, it tells us on there, doesn't it? Take one of the settings on it.
Oh, I don't know, I've never.
What'd you say, Ron?
He thinks it tells us.
I think there's a button you can push on there when you go through like the menu on it.
Item miles versus traffic.
Yeah, I, I think there's, at least on my twenty-one there is, I don't know if there is on the older ones, but there might be, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know.
But then I wouldn't know how many's bad.
What are you looking up, Ron?
Police, police vehicles on the government's.
The oh nine?
Website.
Oh, you mean for how much that Avenger would be worth?
Just, yeah, just different, whatever they got on here.
Throw me a number.
Well, I'm sure Doug can get it for twelve hundred bucks.
That was cold and bloody.
Unless somebody's been against it.
Now, the Avenger's only got ninety thousand miles, right?
Right.
Eighty-five?
Eighty-five to nine, so that's the one you want to keep.
No, the Charger's the one I want to keep, the Charger's a police car. A hundred and sixty, if it had two sixty-nine, I'd still want to keep the Charger when the condition is in.
And the five-point-seven Hemi doesn't have anything to do with it though, correct?
No, it's a police car, five-point-seven all-wheel drive.
At this point, keep the Avenger and the Charger.
Uh, you mean?
Is what you're thinking?
Don't be saying about getting rid of this white one over here.
That's, yeah, that's a Crown Vic.
Yeah, that's what you want to get rid of, isn't it?
That's discont.
But, or like I said, get rid, put the Avenger up for five, six grand, whatever you can get out of it and put that in an account and leave it for maintenance.
How soon do we need to make a decision on that?
Ain't no hurry.
I don't think.
It's got a car.
Tonight.
Either way the Crown's going, right, Crown Vic's going.
No, the Crown would say if you're gonna, if you're gonna sell that, if you're gonna sell the Avenger, the Crown, the Crown would just stay where it's at, just keep driving until.
But you say it's in worse shape.
I, it's worse shape than what those are. If you, if you go out, well, you can't look at it now, it's dark outside, but if you look at it, it's in pretty good shape compared to what the Crown Vic is. Yeah. But.
Crown Vic is already equipped, the Avenger is not.
Exactly.
But all that equipment can go to the Avenger?
Uh, most of it.
Most of it.
Most of it.
I wouldn't say all of it.
Well, I guess we'll have to table this then.
That's just, just something to think about, that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Something to think about, and I wish that we had representation from the street department to, you know, their lab would say, well, we're gonna drive it anyway, I mean, that wasn't a bad idea to have a, a car for.
Just another maintenance.
To go, to go get tests or samples or run it in the store or whatever the case is, it'd be a lot better gas mileage.
You have to be in other maintenance.
That truck, that big truck's probably a lot more expensive to replace too, if you put a bunch of miles on it and run it.
They don't hardly use it unless they.
The new truck?
The old truck.
Oh, they're.
He's talking about, he's talking.
What about the new one, the new one?
Yeah, the new truck. Just to keep, you know, keep miles off of it and.
Oh, it's already, I forget, you, you told, they told us here a while back and it was unbelievable how many miles it had on it.
It's got over ten thousand on it now. But, I mean.
But they usually.
So we have a new vehicle to drive.
That, that gives you time over the next month, you go out there and pull the tarp off and look at, look at that car and get an idea of what you're looking at. And then, like I said, the white car is just, you know, it's starting to flake off and stuff just for the paint, I mean, it's not dented or damaged or anything.
How long did we use that brown car that's in the picture up there that we got? We had that, how many, how many years, how many years ago was that?
Oh, I don't, I don't remember, that's about long.
It was before, it was before two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, I don't think it has.
France used to have dates on the back, they don't do that anymore, do they? Wait, what, at least what, five years or seven years?
Oh.
Oh, no, more than that.
No, I've got Tom Reaper shirt on, it was before two thousand fifteen.
And so, that was about ten years ago.
Well, and we made it last, we had to put a little money into it, but for the most part.
We went a long time without putting money into it, then when we did get it.
The white car, we haven't put that, we haven't put any money into as far as.
All these cars we're talking about, every one of them that donated.
Yeah, they're handsome. So, that's why I thought, even if you sell the Avenger, that could just be.
We got that one donated too.
Yeah, all right.
The twenty-eleven, the twenty-eleven and the two thousand nine Charger I got donated.
Yeah, all right.
So.
The one before that's one of the.
Yeah, the silver one.
That, that Crown Vic's not all-wheel drive either.
No, Crown Vic sucked in the winter.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It sucked, that, that's the first all-wheel drive car I've ever drove. Well, other than my wife's car, so, but, uh, yeah, it's a, I mean.
We can buy a twenty-eighteen with a hundred and thirty-five thousand miles on it, a sedan, four-door, all-wheel drive, five-point-seven liter V-eight for sixteen-five, uh, sixteen-two fifty.
What year is it?
Eighteen.
Yeah, it's a seventeen.
Yeah, so this would sell for a lot of money, when you do charges.
Yeah, but to get one, to get one that's comparable to that, you're gonna be putting about the same amount of money right back into it.
Well, this has got a hundred and thirty-five thousand miles on it, that one's got a hundred and sixty-something.
Yeah, I wouldn't be trading this for a thirty thousand mile gain. Because I, I know how that car drives, the only thing that, that I think is gonna go wrong in the near future is a, is a hundred dollar fan, coolie fan? That's about it.
Anybody got any more questions for Rick? I make a motion, do I need to make a motion to table this on the, the vehicles?
No.
So you guys.
You don't have to, but you can.
Did you print that out?
Your share of welcome table.
Yeah, I gave all of them a copy.
Have to. Oh, Ron, Ron gave you a copy of the statute that deals with building, there's a state law that, that governs what, what you as a town can do and can't do.
About what?
About buildings, if, if the town wants to get rid of a building, that's a, that's got issues, there's a.
Or do inspections, you, there's, there's a criteria for applying for an inspection warrant through the court to have the, to have the building inspected if the owner won't let you in to do, um, you know, fire inspections.
All this is for Bob.
Well, it's definitely a fire hazard, as we all know, and we're just built.
That house is, that house, it, if you spend the money to go through a court to get it condemned, they would condemn that house, but it's gonna cost money, that's, that's kind of the thing.
And at what time does the, the county do it, if there is a town and the incorporated town, I think the county's not gonna spend their money. It's up to a town to do that.
No, the, the town's gonna have to, the town's gonna be flipping the bill for this.
I know, let's sell the Avenger and get that house condemned.
Well, there you go, what, if it makes sense, take.
I mean, it makes sense.
Drive the Avenger through the house.
Make a lot of sense in this business.
There you go, pardon me.
What'd you say?
Drive the Avenger through the house, problem solved.
Well, it's insured now, right?
It's insured.
I make a motion, we accept the police report and we table the decision on the three vehicles of which ones to keep and which ones.
So make sure that you guys take a look, the one in the garage and then the two out there, so.
The, the keys here or something.
No, I mean, the keys will be locked up, uh, if you, but, but during the day, whenever I'm, whenever I'm here, we can, we can come down here. You guys take it for a drive if you want to, I don't care.
I need a second on the motion.
Okay, so you can't drive.
Well, yeah, you have, yeah, because when you drive a Crown Vic and then you drive a Charger with a Hemi, it's just.
One gets it and the other one doesn't.
Yeah, I'm here twenty-four, twenty-four years and this is the first time I've had a real police car.
The, the Crown Vics are meant for top end speed, but if you're in pursuit, like he's talking about, you're gonna need that bottom end, otherwise they're already gone by the time you're.
How many Avengers? How many pursuits have we been into in this twenty-four years you've been here, Rick?
Well, I could've been if I'd have, if I'd have my Hemi.
That's my point.
How do we have the Avenger police car though, because it's not really.
I don't know about that, that's.
Those are front-wheel drive V-cars.
So if you need to make a motion, make it two motions, make one.
I mean, if you put us.
Both in the same motion.
Throttle ball, so you can get it to go faster, but.
That would not be a pursuit vehicle, your Avenger, that's why I'm thinking that if, if the town can find use for it, sell it, put it, put money in an account, save it for later, for later for something else, you never know.
All right, the motion's been made, Anthony made the motion to.
Accept the police report.
Accept the police report and I'll second that motion.
And then?
Motion's been made and proper second to accept police report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed, say aye. And the second motion made?
A motion to table the decision on which vehicles to keep and which to get rid of.
You can second too, you're a seconder now, if you'd like to, and it means I'll second that motion.
It will definitely.
Because I want, I want to check the vehicles out first.
I was gonna say, it's gonna be you guys, because I'm, I'm not gonna know what.
I'm not seeing any of them really up close.
I have it. See, the white one, you're not gonna grab the white one back where we got it?
Yes.
Well, and we both, we all need to take in consideration how Rick feels about this and what they want to drive.
I kind of agree with him, because I've had to drive the same type of vehicles before, it's, I kind of, I'd say the Charger would be the one to keep. I don't see how an Avenger.
Yeah, I don't, that's front-wheel drive and it's, I'm kind of confusing it.
All right, the motion's been made to table the decision on the three vehicles, all in favor, say, I need a second, I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Thank you.
And then second.
Okay, I'm guessing everything's okay at the wastewater plant, because my toilet flushed before I left the house, so it must still be good. And then we have no one here from the sewer plant, we're just, call it good.
Did you see these, I, I wonder if Doug, if he's here, did you?
I don't know.
A sample, examples.
That's one of the organs for burn.
Yeah.
Oh, he is, Doug is working on a new burn ordinance. We got three copies.
There's several copies here.
We'll just pass out.
Yeah, this is real thick. Oh, no, it is.
Yeah, he did say that he had been working and was working on a new town burn ordinance.
He's the new fire chief?
Yes.
Yes, Doug is the new fire chief.
The Avenger's oh nine.
Insurance of a citation to the violator shall result in imposition of a one thousand dollar fine.
Well, see, that's gonna go over real well. See, that's teeth though, right there.
Uh, what I would like to recommend is everybody take copies of this home with you tonight, before the next meeting, let them over, we'll talk about them. Hopefully Doug will be able to make the next one, any questions we have, write them down, he'll be able to answer of course. There's no, no, no sense in discussing that hand being here, probably, so.
Okay.
Facility, let's see, wastewater treatment plant, monthly report, like I say, it's working.
You have a copy of the street report, did I, I gave everybody or not? I'm probably have to use some of your copies.
We'll get a little break on the payroll, our street guys are on vacation, I think, for a couple of weeks.
They did, they did get the roof down.
Yes, the roof, that roof done and, uh, one of our part-time, sometime part-time employees, Becca, helped finish the roof out there.
How'd that occur?
Excuse me?
How did that occur? How was she able to get back on the payroll?
She's always been on the payroll.
She is able.
She's always been on the payroll.
I thought she quit.
No, 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 she never, she never quit.
No.
Well, she quit her job at the sewer plant, she quit.
No, she didn't.
No, she didn't.
She resigned.
I thought it was just as is or something like.
She said she would help as needed, she never quit.
Yeah, she never quit, quit, she said she would help as needed if.
But she doesn't.
Doesn't do what?
Go out to the sewer plant.
She went out to the sewer plant and helped him put the roof on, because the other guys couldn't get up on the roof, so.
But otherwise, she doesn't do anything at the sewer plant.
Not on a regular basis, not on a regular, if mercy comes up, sure she'll go out there and.
She's being cooperative and nice and willing to help us if we need it.
If we need it.
Yeah.
So they're not here to talk this topic?
I am. Excuse me?
They're not here to discuss this, huh?
No.
Do you have the hours for the street and the?
Well, they got hours because of the, uh, Maple Street, now that deal on this one, so much better, they've been working up there with the.
What was that?
Rick, I'm gonna cramp it in his pocket. See?
Maybe something with stone grime.
Okay, dude. This is one of the street, uh, two street partner guys, they're not full-time, they're full-time, but, uh, Rick Shepherd and Wayne Weaver. Eight-one, moved at the plant, worked on the lift station and started roofing. I don't know why he started roofing, he wouldn't get up on the roof, so.
Uh, well, once you're old, one's got bad knees.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good one.
We do have a lot of elderly people here, you have been, uh, Lower Street guys in seventy-three and, yeah, how old's Shepherd, fifty-eight, fifty-nine?
Oh, he's like sixty-one or two.
Oh, yeah.
Boy, he's had a sixty-one or two, uh, work at plant, work at plant, ideally what would be good if it's thirty-two, this is the first time that that clock came out.
So unfortunately.
That's a difficulty to make, because people work sometimes if you get a chance, it's kind of, and the bad thing about it, we are all a part-time people. You've got a full-time job, I got a full-time. That's a difficulty to make, sometimes if you get a chance. It's kinda, and the bad thing about it, we are all a part-time people. You've got a full-time job, I got a full-time job, well, not full-time, but uh, so sometimes it's kinda hard to hook up with these guys.
Yeah, I don't even get over your building sometimes.
Right. Uh, they're here normally during the day, I'd say eight, nine o'clock till two o'clock maybe.
During the week or something?
Yeah.
Um, that's probably why I can't see it.
Exactly. Uh, one guy drives from the east side of Richmond, one guy lives right here in town, Shepherd. He's, he's handy, especially in the wintertime, but he will knock the hump, the speed hump out and that's who probably knocked it out by the time, but he's local and that, that's, that's good.
Does it say their hours on the bed?
No.
I'll see it on the.
Just says the dates and that's all it ever does. But in order, I guess if you wanna look at the hours, I can do is uh, match the time cards to the dates they have on there.
We can see the warrants, they get paid ten an hour, so you can basically figure it out. That's okay.
Uh, tech cement tools to the plant, uh, final prep of concrete, pour concrete at the plant, collection box. They have been working and it's been, how long was the Maple Street thing, maybe over two years?
Or more.
Five.
Or three.
And table for a while.
Table for a while.
Yeah, they made the form to pour the concrete thing and then record it to go down.
Uh, something like that can be put on a back burner because I mean, it didn't disrupt anything.
Took a lot of money to kinda fix it, so.
Well, better, it's a lot cheaper than having somebody come in and fix it, I think.
How much that cost?
So anyway.
Probably twenty or thirty thousand.
There's a lot of things as we go along, you'll say, you're kidding me. You'll look at both of us and say, you're kidding me.
And you do have a box upper, Scott, so you'll start getting stuff in it. Where's that?
We do know that, like I say, the roof is done out there, uh.
Hold mine, would you, Rick, please?
What are they waiting on now? Uh, just for that all to settle up in Maple Street to, to pave over or correct?
Yeah, they probably next year for, they can uh, finish that up up there completely, completely. I'm not sure.
Anything, have you had a chance to speak with Bob Bullock at all this week or this month or?
Maybe and he is, he's taking uh, classes. Yeah, he's taking classes. And he'll be back tomorrow.
Did he, but nothing's going on with, nothing going on here in town that we need to know about or?
He uh, he got with Mr. Williams, everything was fine there.
But just the regular product party.
Got his money for that, so.
Mr. Gregman.
Williams down at the Pearl Street property, so we'll manage this, please. So, he's up here that.
So, no, no, we run into this a lot being such a part-time, this sometime table show, sometimes you know, if I'm pronouncing it, you won't have nobody here, did. Exactly. Uh, the next thing is always a sewer utility monthly income of disbursements.
And we're always gonna have that.
Always.
I already figured that.
Oh, we had a good month in August. We took in fourteen thousand dollars, that was good. Uh, and we only dispersed uh, little under eleven thousand, so we're good. Even though we have uh, dispersed a little bit more than what we've taken in this year. We still have overdue trash and overdue uh, sewer. At the beginning of August, we had thirteen accounts that was in ninety days and the Pope Treasury recorded three new sewerings in August and at present time, we have thirty-one outstanding sewerings that should be paid through the Wayhan Treasury Department.
Now, that sounds like a lot to you, I'm sure, but it's really not. Can you explain sewerling? I guess it probably sounds like a lot, thirty-one overdue sewerlings.
Uh, that's not a lot. At one time, we had over a hundred and we worked it down to where we've only got maybe thirty-one here, working with the people to help.
And just cause there's leads, that doesn't mean they're not paid though, right?
Uh, some people are paying and some people aren't. Uh, we were, was fortunate with fourteen Washington Street because it's went back uh, to the bank and uh, they will pay the sewerings only yet and we got a check for nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty cents this week. Oh, from that? Yes.
Those guys.
Yeah, most, seven hundred and twenty, thirty-nine dollars went to trash and the rest of it went to the sewer. But we are, I nearly cried when I was reading, but I had, I was expecting it because Brenda's been working on it. She sent all the information they needed. She scanned about this many papers that they had to have and uh, they had said that they would pay and they did. So they're current, they were seventy-six dollars, but that's great on that property, that's fourteen Washington. I wish we could be that blessed with all of the situations. But we are blessed, we only have thirty-one sewerings, but right now, we can't, hopefully we don't have any big disasters or anything because uh, this sewer account is not as healthy as it was three, three or four months ago. Cause we had a motor.
But it's a whole lot healthier than it was ten years ago.
Oh, my gosh, yes. We were at a point where we couldn't even know the checks after the meeting, so I went to the bank and made a deposit the next day.
There's a trick, if you tear the bottom of that check, it takes the rest of the day to get it cleared.
I spent it in Durham Hill until I went to the bank, we were, we were in that situation. But thank God it's better now, yeah. We're a lot better off than what we were, but we're gonna have to watch it. Watch our speeding. Cause the pump went out at the lift station at the uh, sewer plant and then the motor went out of that one of the air handlers and that's gonna be pricing. And they. That's where all our money goes. They don't forget to charge.
No.
Okay, anybody got any, any questions with Nita? Janice, you got any questions with Nita? Do you have an answer? For you that don't know, this is Janice. She is our uh, uh, helper.
She does monthly or does several reports for us yearly.
She does our budget for us each year and uh.
She's our second set of eyes.
Yes, second set of eyes and she's uh, got some experience from Centerville. Excuse me?
Extremely experienced, very up.
Yeah, she was our hundred years. Seems like, but she was Pope Treasurer at Centerville for twenty years. And we're fortunate to have her to come over and help us out.
Okay, I'm finished business. It's a storm drain at Maple Street we've been talking about. It is in progress. It's, it looks a lot better than it has. It's not completely done. Like you said, it'll probably be spring before it's paved over and.
Yeah.
But right now, it's.
Yeah, you have to see how it settles and stuff.
It's boxed off and all that.
Did you wanna make a motion or do you feel we're going to?
Yeah, we better. I'll make a motion, we accept Nita's uh, sewer report, or Nita. So she's been made, probably seconded. There you go, alright, let's go. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say the same. Thank you. Motion carries. Speed bumps, pumps, we're talking, a lot of this, it's a lot easier when our town coordinator is here, because he's got his hand in all of it.
Yes, yes.
Outside cameras, we spoke about, uh, we spoke about them several times this year. Uh, we just need to get out to somewhere and look at them and get them.
Scott, when you guys have free time, we'll go pick them up.
Alright. New business.
You gonna get the solar power, wireless news? That can, you'll hook up the, connect the box and the building?
Probably, cause I don't, I don't wanna do, I don't wanna do a bunch of wiring.
Yeah.
I think what we might wanna do then is uh, I know you guys are gonna go look at them, but we probably ought to, if you're thinking about maybe going out and buying them, we need to talk about what kinda money.
Four hundred dollars.
The warrants.
Were they talking about buying?
Cameras?
I would like to participate in that.
Well, Brenda, uh, you're gonna drive and buy their lunch.
I'm not.
That's participation.
Ronnie, Kathy?
Yes, please.
Those right in the right.
Thank you.
Are you guys, what about Arlo? Have you guys, is it Arlo cameras? Have you heard about those?
Yeah.
There's like all kinds of things.
I mean, those have pretty good ratings, but obviously I'm a blink.
I don't know, I was, I have ring, but I was looking at the blink though.
I like the blink.
Cause they, they, they integrate real easy.
Yeah, they do. Mom, you know, mom has blinks and she can handle them.
Hey, once you set them up, you don't gotta work, you don't gotta work on them no more.
Do you need a fork or a spade?
I don't know. Probably, anybody else want one? I think there's, there's a little cat litter on there, but you know.
There, Brenda, you don't mind a cat litter.
You want, you want some?
I'll take some home.
And we have the warrants, please, they're right there by you.
N dot email, let's see, is he N dot email?
Yeah, this come in and I just want you guys to see if you weren't interested in it or not. I didn't have Scott's email address, even send it to him, I would, just send it to you guys. Let's see if there's any interest there.
Oh, it's not on the project thirty-eight?
No, I keep waiting to hear about that.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything. And I, every time I come down here, I ask Nita if she's heard anything from the state. Uh, I hope, I hope they do what they say they're gonna do. They were supposed to have done it last year and they put it off till this year, cause there's twenty-one who were out there looking at it, weren't they, Rick?
Yeah.
I hope they don't decide to come through and do what they did on thirty-five.
Oh, you, you mean uh, piece like half?
Chip seal, yeah, that's what they did.
Yeah, but that'll be enough of the sidewalk.
Well, they said they were gonna do the sidewalks.
Well, they were supposed to drop it all down in front of the apartments, all the way past the hand vents, uh, all new sidewalks and all that.
Kinda like they did in, what, Cambridge City or Dublin, for that?
Well, what they're doing in uh.
Yeah, they're doing that, they're doing it through Louisville right now.
New sidewalks, street, everything.
Sidewalks, ADA ramps, um, now, they will do your streetlights on thirty-eight. Any of the side ones that you wanna do, you have to get a grant for them. We got a grant to do our, convert all of our streetlights to LED.
It'll be worth, but it's probably expensive.
Yeah, we had got a thing.
I think most of it was covered by the grant.
We had got a thing about uh, upgrading the streetlights to LED and I forget what it was gonna cost us.
Oh, that was a, that was expensive.
Yeah, very.
That was a crazy one in the.
Very.
Don't they, don't, don't they own the, the, the streetlights and you gotta pay them rent?
We pay, yeah, we pay about almost five hundred a month for streetlights.
It was a few, it was a, a four or five year rebate thing and it seems to be it was ten.
I was thinking it was a ten year rebate, but maybe it wasn't.
Maybe it was, but it was.
Why should you be paying for anything? Is there a damn streetlight?
Well, that's why we're not doing it, Rick.
That was the crazy part.
And then I think what you do that, it probably costs you a little bit extra each month anyway.
Yep.
I can't remember the percentage uh, for the additional cost.
It's kinda odd if we get a big power company for their streetlight.
What's this N dot? Okay.
I just wanted, right by you, you may just pitch it, see if there's any interest there.
It uh, it would behoove y'all to definitely be very proactive in contacting the engineers that are, the people actually, telling N dot what's gonna get done. The, the engineers develop the plan, N dot carries it out. Um, if there's things that you would like done, like curb bump outs and that kinda thing, you need to get with them ahead of time and pre-coordinate all that.
We'd already done that. We did that in twenty-one on the project that was supposed to have been coming through here last year, this week till this year. But yeah, we, there was uh, me and Rick and what, you out there too? Stuart was out there, he was out there, Doug was out there. What, and, and one of the things was too, there are some sewer mains in the middle of thirty-eight that are in the states and they were supposed to have been taking care of all of them too. Uh, because we have found, uh, Doug has found when uh, we have issues, that when they laid the sewer pipe, and they come to a sewer main, they just cut the sewer main, laid the pipe down right between and went on. But how do you know that? You know, when they do it, when they did it eighteen years ago, our engineering firm that we hired is supposed to have been monitoring all that, uh, didn't do us a very good job. Uh, that's why they're out of business, I'm sure. Plus, I think we stuck up for a hundred and thirty grand.
You guys are almost halfway paying out on?
No, we're not either. We still owe almost seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, and twenty, and forty years?
Yeah, but my gosh, we still.
Yeah, but you, you pay all of it.
Right. I'm just saying, you only got twenty-two years left, they'd be paid off.
That's not, it is, Rick.
Not that way, we'll have a party, oh, yeah, right.
We owe over seven thousand. We paid fifty-three thousand a year on the, on the thing.
Forty-four years, isn't it? Seven forty?
Forty.
Oh, is it forty-four?
It was forty.
I thought that when they added the extra money on it, it was four, okay.
I think it was forty. Scott, is that S R?
So uh, what this saying here is that Armstrong is the one to talk to, David Armstrong is where this email was from.
They included the uh, inspection warrants.
You got a copy of the case file, okay. You may just wanna pitch it, I mean, that's fine, I just want you to be aware of it. Give me if you want it for soon or not, Scott.
Oh, yeah, we all wanna look at everything. We all just wanna look at everything. Okay. Approval of warrants, this is where we look at what's paid out. Let me find a good one for you.
Look at Wayne's.
Duke Energy.
No, we're not on the people.
Got it, Duke Energy, five hundred forty-nine dollars. People think, what did you pay that for? It's what it costs to light the town up when it gets dark. People think that, I have had people tell me before that, uh, we didn't have to pay no light, you know, we're the town. We're just gonna put a town on board with an electric company.
Yeah.
Still gotta pay for electric.
And example two, I had a guy ask me one time, what do you do with all the, the ticket money you get from these rent tops?
They get split like multiple.
We get four dollars.
I got a phone call.
We get four dollars.
Four dollars a ticket.
I got a phone call.
I remember when you start, we get two.
Yeah, when I first started here, when I started back in ninety-nine, it was, it was two dollars a ticket.
This person called and said, I can change you how you're turning, and give more tickets.
Couple of tickets.
We only get four dollars. She couldn't believe it. Yeah, she called to tell us.
Yeah, they get split so many ways.
Well, uh, what happens is they get.
Especially per town.
We get four dollars, state gets rest.
State least, that's why they get paid the most.
Chris Pickens.
He's the guy that got, that, that got my radio program.
Police.
Have to reimburse them.
Duke Energy, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
You've probably seen Duke though several times, not too many.
You see it for ten, you see it for sure. You'll see R E M C and I've grabbed, you only got one uh, list they can do. You see it first today, start charging service fee. How much was the service fee, Brenda? Thirty-four dollars?
Did we just fill up a gas tank or something? Shore's oil, did we just fill up our tank?
Yeah, we uh, filled up the generator out of the wastewater treatment plant in a tank here.
Why don't we use a Q P A?
Who's that?
A Q P A. Yeah.
It's all that, that, that makes sense too.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
You're talking Chinese, man.
Hundred and two dollars for.
I bet you it would've been a third. If you tell me what that charge was, I can tell you what the daily Q P A was.
You want a four?
It was what?
I've been by it, I've never been.
No, I'm almost done. I'm doing these shoes on, I'm just, I hurt bad.
What's big? Are they gooey?
They're real gooey though. Haven't been in it, not like you.
And you like gooey? Just talk, talk to me about that today. They're gonna move the opposite of there.
I've never seen that gooey.
Okay, you like gooey?
Ah, so you throwing the cat litter to help? I'm thinking, okay, I'll see what you do now.
Do you know the person that had the litter, cat litter was not in those brown?
She, she was out of cornstarch, right? She, she had to do what she had to do.
I remember in the Navy, we used to use cat litter to clamp diesel fuel.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Still do.
Zero.
Cheap and speedy.
Got some checks or?
They've got a lot of warrants, yeah. That makes them hell, see? I can tell myself, well, I'm making a hell of a warrant.
So I started at two sixty-two pound, two hundred and sixty-two pounds, four months ago. And I weighed myself last night, I'm two hundred and sixteen point two pounds.
Really? That's all you weigh? Two sixteen and you started at two sixty-two?
Mm-hmm.
That's great.
My husband, what, how tall do you run?
Five-ten.
My husband's six foot, he, he weighs two forty-nine. Well, I would have thought he weighed four two thirteen.
Brenda Ricky, okay, Wayne Weaver, five hundred and nineteen.
Nope, he's good eating. He's good eating, I'm cuddly.
He likes brownies.
Oh, okay.
Now, since Scott is, didn't they change the law that he has to have so many hours?
Yeah.
A year now?
All of us do.
All of us do.
What, like five hours a year?
Yeah.
House Bill ten forty, actually.
Oh, yeah, be webinars, definitely.
But there's some good stuff out there though, good classes.
I wonder if we'll have to do that as a group, or can we do it in your own home?
I'm sure you can do it in your own.
Well, he can get the new elected representative handbook.
He got, he got his, what was that book called that they fixed for you, for all of us? Our duties as a council member?
I think it's the same book, same book.
Uh, so that's.
Yeah, that just means.
So Kathy is normally always good about making a motion to approve the warrants.
I make a motion when you accept the warrants.
Motion's been made, proper seconded to accept the warrants. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say the same. Motion carried, thank you.
And I also, at some point in time, we need to write an ordinance on the street department's hours. Because it's out of hand.
Well.
Totally out of hand.
Well, then you won't get stuff done.
They need hours and they can't go over.
Yeah.
They're, they're overdoing it and we're paying Wayne close to a thousand dollars a month for street.
Well, we usually not paying like they used to, only make seventy-nine hour, but we give them ten. Obama's giving them ten. What's today's date? Oh, I should know this. Do you know it's fifty years ago today that I joined the military?
You're kidding.
Fifty years.
I'll be darned.
And I'm not even that old.
Me either.
Yeah, he was in the council. This is a nice one, so from my dentist office today.
Really?
Well, they don't actually keep it. Shoot my watch, please.
You should be able to give it.
Scott.
He can't, oh.
Oh, that's right.
He went here.
Oh, I had him sign this one.
Oh, I don't know that.
Well, it's still a warrant, sure he can. He's approving the.
Oh, he's approved, yeah.
Yeah, he can sign that one too.
He got approved last month, so you know he wasn't here. I'm just asking.
It was paid out, ask Brenda, but I'm thinking he can't because he's a, he's lucky. Hey, Brenda.
Okay. I think he can.
Okay.
Hey, hey, Nita, I'm going.
Yeah, because you're approving them this month.
That's right.
That's right.
It's not like he reads anyways.
Doctor Cushing. Anybody have anything they want to bring from the town board for reading?
Yes. We need a new computer in the office here.
Yep, can't keep it on, is it?
We're gonna get one, okay?
Is there any money in the police fund that we can get?
Wrong.
That's not on them.
You, you know more about the money situation than we do. If we got the money, buy one, buy one. You gotta have it, you gotta have it, I mean, it's simple as that.
Yeah, because it's getting very temperamental.
Yep, it goes on.
Can that one be rebuilt?
And can we pay online yet?
No.
No.
Are we gonna be able to?
No.
Why?
It's on our program. We're gonna do it.
Well, how can it be?
We're not, we don't have, our system's not updated enough and we have to buy a whole new system.
Okay.
And that's what we've not done because of the cost. It's, it honestly, it's, it's the system. We're not, we're not set up to, still, it'll be manual for us by hand, so.
It's more money than.
Someone can go online and tell their bank to mail us a check.
Right, that's how Ted Lewis.
And they've been doing that for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do that.
There'd be no, uh, no, you got anything there?
The ice door next door to us?
Ice door next door to you.
You know, Shiverdecker.
Oh.
Who owns that, Nita? What bank, Bath Bank? No, not Bath, Bath on mine.
Shiverdecker, it's in his name.
It's on his name. I've heard of the spotlights showing into our bedroom all night long.
Yeah, that's why I like to keep coming on. They should.
Happens, well, we'll tell you what to do after the cameras off.
They didn't have, they didn't have electric on for a hot minute and then all of a sudden it got turned back on. And they're, yeah.
It shines right into.
Our bedroom window.
One living room for us.
Yeah, all night long.
It's bright.
Do we have an address where we can contact Shiverdecker?
I have the address, but, uh.
At the AC building, it runs twenty-four shows.
I have an address.
What, what did you say?
Do we have a number we can contact?
I don't have a phone number.
I have an address.
There's probably.
You have an address? Have you run my letter? Or you doing the address?
Beacon.
Beacon don't show where they live, does it?
I, they moved in, she, she kicked Papal out. Kicked Papal out and sent him to nursing home.
We need to send a, uh.
She kicked her grandpa out of, out of his house and moved into his house in Centerville, yeah.
I need to run that weed eater down inside that new.
Yeah, thirteen fifty-eight Rice Road, Centerville.
Cut down and.
Are we in a position that we need to do something over there, Beth?
That spray that I get.
What can we do?
Mow it, bill them?
Oh, yeah, but it probably better run that weed eater down first.
Well, eventually it'll go back to the bank.
It shouldn't be that way, is it?
I would think.
I think.
They had, they had somebody in the house changing locks out and taking pictures and was supposed to put a bid on cleaning it up. Because he had the garage doors open and there were like fifteen unfrozen turkeys and bugs and smell in the garage.
I'm sure he does left that there as a, as a reminder to all his good neighbors.
Well, it'll surely go back to the bank here real soon and we will.
I would think it would have already.
Yeah, but sometimes that can take a year or so, man, before closure to happen.
Well, it's just like my neighbor, it's not quite, well, it probably is as bad as Shiverdecker. Because I've been, I kind of knocked down this front of it, I would be afraid.
Well, the fence is falling down into our yard and we've had to screw it up. I'm waiting on financials to get a survey done. I want to put up a privacy fence to see if I can take that fence down because we have to keep our dog on a chain, if not, she jumps the fence, so.
You know where your property line is?
No, we don't know if the pole barn's on our property.
When you bought the house, it should tell you where your property line is.
That, that barn on Shiverdecker's property might be on their property.
My thing is you can put a fence right on the line. It don't have to be a foot off or two foot, it can be right on.
I just want my comfort.
Yeah, but the pole barn itself might be all across the property line. I would just take the garage as.
The best thing you can ask this lady here about getting, uh, getting people's surveyors involved.
So tell people where we're buying it.
Thirty feet.
It's not cheap.
Well, I had a guy that, I, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, the, what we wanted surveyed was twelve hundred and they, they didn't even want that much for the piece of property. And they just wouldn't mow it and we knew we'd mow it.
I just want to get a fence put up.
You should be able to go on the G I S and see exactly where your property line is.
That's how, uh, where I work at, my buddy, man.
So, can we get a letter to the Shiverdeckers, you think?
It would show, I think the grass area right there.
It probably won't do any good, but it's a.
Right.
Because it's.
At least we'll have a record.
And Nita thinks they filed bankruptcy, so it's gonna go back in the bank's hands anyway. Then we'll get money and, you know, do stuff.
Sometimes when, when that barn was built.
It'd be better if the sewer goes to the bank. Where we have someone we can contact about keeping it mowed and keeping it cleaned up.
Building structures our grandfathers in. Pencils or not, a structure would be.
Sorry, that building though.
Right, but you, they would just, they wouldn't be able to, it's all yours.
Your property goes.
So, like even mowing, they could put that on the sewer lane or?
Well, I don't have that, it's. It hangs there.
I mean, you can lean mow.
You can lean mow.
Yeah, you can, but you gotta go through the steps.
And that would be cleaning up the property to mow it as well.
I wonder what the inside of that house is like.
It's disgusting. I'll bet. We went in it when they were still living there to try to get his uncle to move in.
Cousin.
Cousin, sorry, to move in.
What about the dog?
Still alive, but when we went in, there was poop and pee and it was disgusting. It was disgusting.
They kept that pit bull in the basement?
Oh, poor animal. They had to when they were moving, or they moved it out at night when we didn't know about it.
Alright, so we have, did we answer your question there? She's gonna send the letter?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, what else? You recommend something that, you'll drive mine?
Spray, spray all their grass over.
I know Scott mowed around the sidewalk because it was growing over the sidewalk. We've mowed the front yard a couple times.
Yeah, I just even swiped across the front, just get it off the sidewalk. And I'm gonna run the weed eater down that fence, to protect my fence, because I got a sixteen thousand dollar fence there. I don't want to get destroyed.
Right, well, we appreciate that, like I say. And when it gets to the bank, then we'll have a little bit better recourse to be able to get that, that care up.
Because it's drawing bugs and everything.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mowed my neighbor's yard, so the farmers don't come in my yard.
It's gonna draw mice this winter, I guarantee it.
Oh, snakes?
Oh, we've got snakes, we've got snakes.
Don't you say that.
We're sitting in the driveway the other night and Angela's, and she says, watch. She does this, now it pops coons out of the chimney.
That's the noise they make.
At her house? Who's firing that furnace up there?
We own the house right next to ours, the yellow vinyl sided one. That was Dean's mother and father's.
They're living across the street from me too, but.
Well, we already have, you have. Complete ceiling replaced.
I don't know what's living in, in Shiverdecker's house because there's, there's a hole in that cable vent and then someone's pulled down that socket on the other side.
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, they, they got trapped in there because Dean sealed it off. They popped out the hole vent.
Anybody got anything else?
Oh, did you tell them that we did get audited?
Oh, yeah, we, we, we were audited, five-year audit. State Board of Accounts had the end brief yesterday. Probably having the out-brief about November.
What's this cost us?
That's another thing.
That's another thing, we, it's gonna be expensive.
Three or four thousand?
Nine hundred and something dollars a day, isn't that what he said for one thing?
But they'll let us make payments like they didn't.
Well, these guys here can make those.
But that's something we'll have to pay for the end of the year, so.
Well, here's my thing, and it's exactly, you asked her what I told them people. I said, so we need to make payments. If we can't make payments, they can have the keys and they can have the town. Because that's, we, you can't pay something you don't.
They take payments on that.
Well, yeah, they did the last time.
They did the last time.
We paid on seven years last time. Not four seven years, but on the seven-year inspection. This is a five-year inspection.
They used to do it every other year. And then they let us go seven years at one point. They knew that we were.
Yeah, they.
Both of these small towns like this are, they don't have too big of issue. Now, Centerville, oh, I can't say it over there.
Yeah.
Alright, before he gets himself in trouble, I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
I second it.
Motion's been made, properly seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say the same.